So we'll start with introductions, as I mentioned. And before we do that, I'd also like to introduce this idea of culture as being soil, culture as being what we are all kind of rooted in trying to accomplish all of our individual work in the world. And we all know, if your soil is not very healthy, you can have the greatest seeds or root stock in the world. It's not going to get you as far as you want to get. And yet, you can influence the health of the soil. You can contribute to culture. You can see it degrade over time. You can see it improve over time. And so for all of us, I think, in framing our comments, it was helpful to have that metaphor in mind, culture as the soil that we ourselves are all planted in trying to thrive. So I'll start by telling you a little bit about myself. I am an investor in many circles. That sounds like a very confessional thing to say these days. And yet, I've been an investor for 25 years now. I managed some large funds at Fidelity Investments and also was the head of research there for a long time. What I have loved about investing that entire time has been its direct connection to the actual world. I think that investing is embodied belief, and every time we make decisions, whether it's with our money, as consumers, as citizens, as family members, we're voting for the kind of world that we want to see with those investments. And yet, over the course of those 25 years, as a professional investor, I've seen a real split evolve between investing and finance. Investing, to me, is a very connected activity, as I just mentioned. It's very linked to the real world and what we want to see happen in it. It's a very biological model. It's a lot like farming. It's a lot like a forest ecosystem. Finance, however, has taken on much more of a factory model, much more mechanized, much more focused on things like scale, automation. And the rift between these two things has really formed the basis of my current work. I left a big investment firm in 2007, went to divinity school, and started the rerouting process for my own work. That's about the same time that I started my firm, Honeybee Capital, and that has led to the study of biomimicry and natural systems the last few years and the publishing of a book earlier this year called The Nature of Investing, which starts with that very simple premise that investing actually is much more like a biological ecosystem. And if we look to the natural world as our rules of the road, shall we say, some of the rules that Joel mentioned last night, we find investing that is much more focused on relationship instead of transaction, that is focused on generation instead of extraction. So that's what brings me to this discussion on culture. And again, we see these intertwining between food investing and culture altogether. We'll start with our introductions now, and then we'll bridge into conversation. Elliot, you want to go first?
Sure.
Great.
Since we're talking about soil, I want to talk about the culture of small farmers who have their fingers in the soil. And I spent time this past year with two exceptional groups of this culture. And both of these groups reminded me of an Amory Lovins quote, that the key was not to do problems, but to do solutions. The first group was called the Agrarian Elders, and they met last January at Esalen in California. And I don't know if you know Esalen, but there's hot tubs. The old guys had a wonderful time, let me tell you. We rounded up 24 men and women with an average of 40 years' experience as successful organic farmers. If slow money had existed back then, those are the type of people you all would have been investing in. They were the most wonderful bunch of hard-working old hippies that I've ever hung out with. The one word to describe them all was passionate. Forty years ago, we had all wanted to make the world a better place to live in, and we all thought that agriculture was the obvious place to start. But what we encountered, we encountered what had, for some reason, come to be called conventional agriculture. It said that our dreams were impossible, and they defended their dogma with an almost religious fervor. Every time they told us to be realistic, they were telling us to compromise our ideals. We had no intention of doing that. We all realized, as we were sitting around talking during the Agrarian Elders, that we had been part of a new enlightenment, what I call the agricultural enlightenment. And if you remember the original one in the 17th and 18th centuries, to try and overthrow the dogma of the time, well, we were up against an irrational dogma, and all of us had set out to overthrow it. Well, over the past 40 years, all of us had proved without question that not only are the methods of organic farming far superior, but so is the quality of the produce. We had all been successfully pursuing a biological agriculture, because chemical agriculture was obviously illogical. How many of you realize that a leading pesticide in the early 20th century was lead arsenate? It didn't take much reasoning 40 years ago for these old hippies to see that it was somewhat illogical to spread lead and arsenic on food before eating it. The good news is that all the old '60s sayings were true. Follow your dreams, and the money will happen. All of these farmers are making a good living on their farms. Then there was a second group of younger farmers. And the second group met in Vermont in August and was called Frozen Ground. We rounded up 24 of the most competent winter growers from across the cold northern tier of the U.S., from Maine to Wisconsin. And this was another group that demonstrated doing solutions rather than doing problems. They are the farmers that slow money should be investing in today. And their solution to the need for locally grown fresh salads in cold winter climates with minimal use of energy has been to pioneer techniques for growing greens all winter long in simple, unheated, high-tunnel greenhouses. And this has been done by selecting cold-hardened cultivars, following carefully planned successional sowsings, and providing adequate climate protection. Fresh winter greens, grown in an unheated Maine greenhouse, use only 5% of the energy that is needed to ship that same amount of produce across the country. So the agri-culture of doing solutions instead of problems is alive and well today and charting new paths. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just realized that I'm constitutionally unfit to do a personal introduction, because I don't believe in individuals. As Joel mentioned last night, we're all cultural or microbial communities, not individuals. And so why pretend anymore? So I'm really just going to tell you how I fit in to my community, which, if I was at home in the village of 800 people called Patagonia, Arizona, I'd be at a listening session right now in the coffee shop with farmers and ranchers and ecological restorationists and others. And I think what that's about, what my life's work is about, and what my community is about, is finding ways to create a multicultural component of collaboration, collaborative conservation, restoration of food chains. I call myself a food chain restorationist as a job title. And I think every individual culture, ethnic group, or faith-based community already knows how to collaborate within it, but that we're really lousy at that, doing it across cultures, across face, and across the urban-rural divide. And so a lot of my work is about that healing of the urban-rural divide that I think both Mary and Wendell Berry spoke about this morning. And I'll just shorten this by saying, in the rural community where I live, where I'm an orchard keeper and doing ecological restoration of pollinator corridors, we're working on closing a project that's 1,100-acre sort of training center. It's one of the poorest counties in the United States along the border, and it's to do job creation for ecological restoration of pollinator soil and water in farm and ranch lands. And again, it's not my project, it's a community project, several nonprofits and for-profits collaborating on that in a unique setting. And within two weeks, we'll be closing the agreements on the land access and working for the next 10 years to bring water into our community in three streams that dried up about 50 years ago and bring the pollinators back in what is already the pollinator capital of the United States with hummingbirds and bees and butterflies and bats. The other part of my work is on taking care of the urban food deserts in Tucson, Arizona, eight food deserts around a university that was set up over 100 years ago to help people become food self-sufficient. And damn it, I'm not going to die before that's possible, to get universities back on track with what the Morel Act for Land-Grant Colleges said that we should be doing. And what we're doing to propel that is, we're awaiting the designation of Tucson as the first city of gastronomy in North America, where we use our very rich tradition of food biodiversity of 4,100 years of agriculture, the oldest continuous agriculture in any metro area in the country, to use that food biodiversity and local knowledge for poverty alleviation. If we can't take the richness of the heirloom food movement and the heritage breeds livestock movement and help the poorest of our poor in our communities, then we need to rethink what we're doing. So that's what I work on.
Thank you, Gary.
Well, I've spent most of my career in the wine business, and I've often likened that to having pie for dinner. It's lots of fun, but it's not particularly filling, or at least maybe I should say soul-filling. But about 15 years ago, I was working at a winery in Sonoma County that was owned by the former CEO of SmithKlineBeacham, a titan in the pharmaceutical industry. And our general manager was a PhD in organic chemistry from Stanford. We'd been working on a creek restoration project on a riparian corridor that bisects the estate with the intention of restoring the steelhead and salmon habitat that had been absolutely devastated by over a century of bad agricultural practices. We really figured that we needed to carry that environmental ethic through to the vineyards and the rest of the estate by getting organic certified. So we hired a consultant to help us get there. In working with him, he was quite inspirational. He challenged us not just to get organic, but to get our biodynamic certification. I think our first response upon hearing that was, bio what? But in talking with us about biodynamic farming, he challenged us to think about our farm differently. We still avoided all those farm inputs that aren't allowed in organic certification, like synthetic fertilizers and pesticides. But we also started viewing the farm as an integrated whole, a closed system, a living organism, if you will, self-contained, self-sustaining, able to meet its own needs out of the farm system itself. Fertility could be addressed by bringing animals onto the farm, much to the delight, actually, of those of us who worked there and certainly our winery visitors. Insecteries were built that created welcoming environments for all the good bugs, who then repaid us by taking care of the bad bugs. We stopped worrying about weeds and planted cover crops, mustards and legumes between rows of vines that not only added nitrogen to the soil, but turned what was once brown and dull springtime vineyard into beautiful meadows of green and gold. We started to grow food crops that all the farmworkers and the winery staff could take home to enjoy with their families. Monoculture turned to polyculture, which was quite a concept in the wine industry. This perspective of an integrated whole, where we saw not just the individual components of the farm, but also how they existed in relationship to each other, changed our approach to problem-solving and allowed us to realize the strength and resiliency that exists in dynamic natural systems, where all the parts are in relationship to each other and are integral to the success of the whole. I've been working with Demeter now for seven years, and I have the distinct pleasure of working with all different kinds of farms all over the country. I've often thought about how those principles of biodynamic can be applied, not just to farms, but how we work, the actual business I do every day in working with Demeter. Is there a way to view our business through this holistic lens? Are there examples of ways that we can integrate our business dealings so that the whole succeeds where the individual components might not have? An interesting example of this perspective is some work we are doing right now in the supply chain. Demeter's mission is to enable people to farm successfully in accordance with biodynamic practices and principles. Of course, one of the definitions of farming successfully is being able to make a living as a farmer. The farm has to be able to sustain the farmer. So for the past four years, Demeter has been paying attention to the marketplace. We realized that we needed to act as a catalyst to help facilitate the creation of the biodynamic marketplace, where consumers really understood the value of biodynamic farms and products, where processed food companies want to meet that consumer interest by creating lots of great products, where retailers promote those products and proactively educate consumers, and most importantly, where farmers feel confident that if they move their needle, as they may have years ago when they moved from conventional to organic and now to biodynamic, that they'll be rewarded for their efforts. This is a real catch-22, because how do you create consumer awareness without a national marketplace of biodynamic products? But how do you encourage companies to produce these products and retailers to promote them in advance of consumers even knowing what it is? We realized that the answer lied in bringing all these different actors together in the supply chain, united in a vision of a vibrant biodynamic marketplace that can be created if everyone joins hands and leaps off the end of the proverbial pier together. So we're very excited that Whole Foods was really interested in taking a leadership role in the retail environment. Their interest in support of biodynamic is encouraging some of the best organic food companies to bring biodynamic products to market. Amy's Kitchen, Lundberg Family Farms, The Republic of Tea, Lakewood Organic Juices, Sujah, newcomers like Yellow Barn and Isis Flower. There are more than 25 companies actively working on biodynamic brands or line extensions. And because of their interest, we now have Amy's asking us for 40,000 pounds of biodynamic tomatoes, 25,000 pounds of biodynamic green bell peppers. The chief agronomist for Lundberg Family Farms, the number-one organic rice producer in the U.S., recently converted his family farm, 250 acres, to biodynamic and is now eagerly working with their farmers, who represent more than 13,000 acres of rice farms in California. Imagine, imagine the environmental impact of moving that much acreage into biodynamic production. We even have farmers and processors who are receiving funding from this project from Whole Foods Small Producer Loan Program, further solidifying the retailer's interest in the success of these products once they're on store shelves. It really works, and it's working because all of these people are acting in concert to achieve shared values for healthy food, healthy farms, healthy people, and a healthy planet.
Hi. So my name is Narendra, and I am a recovering fast-money investor. This is where the rest of you, my fellow addicts, are supposed to say, "Hi, Narendra," in a drab voice. I have a background in high-tech, even though I did study humanities in college. High-tech paid better. I was a beneficiary of the internet boom in the go-go '90s. And quite unexpectedly, at a very young age, suddenly had this financial windfall and didn't quite know what to do with it, because I had no experience with these things. So my first response, for both my wife and I, were to sort of go to the experts, which was Wall Street at the time, and try and talk to people and financial planners and people of that ilk, and ask them what to do. And their advice is what we initially took and sort of walked down this path of fast investing. And I quit my day job and basically became a gambler, because that is exactly what their advice was. You know, it was exciting in the way that gambling is exciting, but I like to tell people that Las Vegas is a lot more fun, because the booze is free. But it was not at all satisfying in any kind of meaningful way, and it was certainly not contributing to building a better future for either myself, for my family, or my community. It was, you know, completely selfish activity. And over time, my wife and I kind of came to the realization that really the food system at some level embodies many of the problems that we face as a society and as a species, but that the solutions to many of these problems can also be found in the food system. And as people who really like food, I really like eating, you know, that sort of had a huge draw. And this idea that food and agriculture can act as healers was very powerful to us. I also, at the time, was attending a permaculture course, and at the beginning of the course, you know, we went around the room talking about who we were and why we were there. And one gentleman got up and he said, "It is time to unwind the hypocrisy of our lives." And that phrase really stuck with me, because of course it pointed to this essential truth, that at some level, we are the problem. You know, we're sitting on our wallets over here when we're trying to talk about investing, and we really need to get off those wallets. So my wife and I, of course, had been moving towards this sort of slow-money investment philosophy after reading Woody's book and meeting and things like that, but in really little tiny dribs and drabs, it was still a part of this kind of larger portfolio allocation strategy. But it, again, wasn't very satisfying. We liked the relationships we were building, but it really didn't feel like a complete thing. And we really were looking for a more hands-on approach. The other thing that sort of permaculture design taught me was this idea of looking at what sort of surpluses that each of us can offer to our communities and to the world. And this idea that comes from biomimicry of surplus as akin to pollution. And it really struck me that at some level, what we had a surplus of was time, money, and energy, and love. And these things, if we kept them to ourselves, were simply polluting. But if we shared them and put them to work, they could be very positive. And Carlo Patrini at the last Slow Money Conference talked about manure in the same terms. So we decided to go whole hog and bet the farm, but we didn't have a farm. So we started to look for one and founded this cooperative that I'll talk about in a little bit. To me, just sort of backing up a little bit, it's abundantly clear that externalities are at the core of the problem and that closing loops has to be the core of the solution. The ancient Greeks used to use a word called crematistica to describe an extractive economy that depletes social and natural capital and translates it into financial capital. And that really is what we have today in our contemporary society.
That happened back there then, too?
Apparently, yes. And of course, Aristotle used the word economia, or economics is what we, sort of the English version of that, to describe a more closed-loop household economy that builds natural and social capital. So sort of this theme of closing loops. It also is abundantly clear to me that the problems are systemic. You know, these are not my small little things. And I also, I feel very strongly that the solutions have to look at systems as a whole, not that they have to be one size fits all, but that you have to look at the whole system. And one of the core principles of systems design that my friend Marco Evangelisti taught me was that the values of a system determine its structure and that the structure of a system determines its behavior. So if you think of culture as our collective consciousness and our patterns of behavior, then in order to change culture, we have to start with an appropriate set of values first. We actually have to put some stakes in the ground. And I'm really thankful for Joel Salatin yesterday actually coming up with his 10 points of, you know, sort of absolute values to live by. And then we have to, so we have to, we have to not only set down these values, but we also have to create a new mythology, a new set of stories around them. And then we need to build the structures that embody those values. That's where the investment part of it comes in, and only then can we expect the desired behavioral patterns. For us personally, the stories or values that we were interested in really centered around the need to minimize or completely eliminate externalities in order to steward and regenerate land, the people, and our communities. Now, that was all very well and good, but of course, we needed to build the structures that embodied those values. So we took all of the resources that we had and, in true gambler fashion, bet them all on this, on this project that we, that we call Our Table. And we developed a multi-stakeholder cooperative that models a closed-loop food economy at a community scale, but brings the entire community to that proverbial table. And the idea was that this was a structure that would mirror the land-management ethic that we had in mind, which was really based on biodynamic principles, which Elizabeth mentioned, really thinks of the farm and even the community of farms as a single organism. And I look at that as a, very much as a fractal pattern. I think you can look at it at a microscale or at a macroscale, and the same principles apply. So just, I mean, I'll talk more about specifics tomorrow, about my project. We're honored to be a part of the Entrepreneur Showcase tomorrow, but I want to leave you with one thought. Wendell Berry spoke of the unspeakable intimacy between humans and what we call the natural world. This implied separation or dualism, I think, is at the core of many of our problems. And so I would like you to sort of think about the relationship between yourselves and the plants and animals you eat, the land that they grow on, and the people who coax them from the earth. And I think you'll agree that the essence of this relationship is communion. And it's really communion, which I think is at the center of the culture that we must create together. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. So you've already heard a lot of wisdom and important reflection from our panelists, but I have to say, one of my big takeaways from the entire gathering is going to be, whatever it is you're doing, you need to have a cute pig at the center of it. It somehow focuses the attention and gets everyone engaged in a way that nothing else seems to be able to do, which is kind of a wonderful common ground. And I don't say that entirely in jest. I think this point of connection is a really central one, and it's one reason why we're having this discussion on culture. I will admit, though, when we all started thinking about systems and cultural change in the long span of history, it can get a little overwhelming. And so we thought that for the first part of our discussion, we'd start, we'd start local. We'd start by thinking about our own, our own context, our own local ecosystems, and describing a little bit more about them and about just one or two of the key connections that enable that local ecosystem to thrive, whether it's a literal ecosystem or metaphorical one, based on your personal work. Would you like to start with that, Elliot?
Well, since Woody got to recite a poem, I can recite one.
Awesome.
"The scientists said, 'Oh, you'll never do that,' or at least nobody ever has done it. But we took off our coats and we rolled up our sleeves, and the first thing they knew, we'd begun it. With a bit of a grin and a lift of a chin, without doubting or quitting it, we started to sing as we tackled the thing that couldn't be done, and we did it."
Yay!
The land I'm farming on, when I arrived there back in 1968, was all wooded. But that seemed to make it more fun, because we had to overcome what the pioneers had had to overcome. And that piece of land is now as fertile and as successful as a small farm can be. But it was just a case of focusing on a goal and knowing that nothing is impossible and that we can do it, and we did it.
Awesome. Great.
I work on two kinds of things in my local community. One is this, I've... One is this, I farm, keep an orchard and a nursery on five and a half acres above the native seed search seed production farm that I helped start 30 years ago. And so a lot of it is bringing back the cultivated plant biodiversity that's there. At the same time, on about a dozen farms in our watershed, we've been doing these pollinator hedge rows and ecological restoration of the wildlands on farmlands. And I think what all that work is about is shifting from an extractive economy to a restoration economy, that we saw not only people divided on how to use the land and how to deal with the extractive economy of mining and other things all around us, but once we got people involved in tangible restoration actions, planting hedge rows together, doing conservation filter strips and things like that on these farms to bring back pollinators, it was restoring the connectivity between the different cultures in our own community. It's a mix of Hispanic and Native American and Anglo, mostly recent Anglo immigrants to the borderlands, and also, you know, Tea Party libertarians and old hippies, what I call the ideological horseshoe, where people are almost touching on things like food issues, but they're coming at it from very different directions. And so we're using the practice of ecological restorations of farm and ranch lands to heal the social and political and ideological differences in our community. So part of my work is simply dealing with the kids from all those cultural backgrounds in our own community in Earth Care Youth Corps project, where we go around to all the different farms and ranches in the summer. This last year, it was a group of 10 high school students and some college aid students mentoring them, and then old hearts like me mentoring the college students, and trying to get that connectivity between generations, which is something we also need to restore by letting the older farmers and ranchers in our community mentor the younger ones. So when I mean restoration, I'm talking about restoring those connections between nature and culture, and doing the healing work between the very different cultures that have been divided by the device of politics in this country.
I love this theme of, yeah, thank you. It's come up a few times already in our discussions, this theme of, you know, healing land, healing people, they're not separate themes. And so much of our outward debate seems to often be focused on waiting, waiting for something to kind of come from the outside and give a catalyst for that to happen. I think this is a great example of healing what might seem like intractable social division by working on the land together, healing what might seem like intractable challenges with the land by bringing people together. It's a wonderful and instead of an either/or. Thank you.
Elizabeth, how about you? I would just say that I have the pleasure of working with farmers, and I'm constantly intimidated. But we have a little micro-farm at our house in Healdsburg. We live in a little arts and crafts bungalow. It's five blocks from the center of town. We have a little backyard, but we grow a lot of food, and we have compost pile, and we have chickens, and we have bees. And just relaxing in our backyard at the end of the day brings it all kind of home. And I think part of it is that we're healing ourselves, because it has to really start from our own relationship with food, with our home, with our community. And putting, getting a little dirt under your fingernails is a really good way to do that.
All right, thank you. Miranda, how about you?
So I'd actually like to address something that you brought up about nonviolence. I think we have this sort of misconceived notion in our society today that technology will save us.
This is from a former software executive, mind you.
Yeah, recovery. I am here to tell you that it's not going to. Now, Elliot has invented a better mousetrap. That's the kind of technology we can get behind. It's for voles, which are really very successful. But I met a lady at this conference yesterday who was telling me about a technology conference that she came from, where they were, the keynote speaker was talking about trillions of little sensors, most of which would be on our bodies. And I remember thinking to myself, I already have millions of sensors on my body. It's called my skin, you know? I don't need somebody else's sensors, and I don't want them. So I'm with Wendell Berry as a, as a sort of technology Luddite at some level. But what I'm trying to say is that the technology that we have at our disposal today can certainly be used for good, but more often than not, it allows us so much power, power that we really, as a culture and as a people and as a species, really don't have the capacity to manage and control, that we end up falling into the trap of using it in a poor way. If anyone's ever sat behind the controls of a large earth-moving machine or a bulldozer, I don't care how wise you are, you're going to move dirt, because those things are made for that, and when you sit in that thing, you feel like God. So I am very wary of this idea of giving human beings, who I don't think were very that evolved yet really, or will ever be, I don't know, that kind of power. I think we have to be very, very careful with this idea that technology is going to save us. And I'm going to leave that with that, because I think--
Yeah. That's great. I'm reminded of two things my mother often says. One is, honey, just because you can doesn't mean you should. And the second thing is, if I tend to complain about something being arduous, she says, "Well, dear, that might be why they call it work." You know? No free passes with my mother. So let's, let's take just a few minutes before we open up, and I think we're going to do questions as we did in the last panel. So if you do have a question, you can, you can start assembling a while. When we think about that, that bigger context of culture, our national culture, our global culture, again, this can get to be a little bit daunting, and I think it's maybe a little too easy to say, you know, why can't we be more like things were in this other era, which we've learned is hardly ever accurate? Or why can't we be more like this other place on earth, which, if you live there, may in fact present a very different picture as well? In the U.S., we often say, you know, in France, they pay twice as much for food, and they linger over meals, and that's awesome, but I don't live in France, and I'm not going to move. So we're talking about linking here between global and local a little bit. And I guess the way I'd like to phrase this question to our panelists is, when you think about that grander context of culture, and maybe culture shifting over time, what, what gives you the most hope? What do you see already shifting that might not be apparent to everyone yet?
You want me to start?
Could you?
Well, back to what you said about work. I'm fond of the old saying that work is what you're doing when you'd rather be doing something else. And we get these wonderful 20-somethings working on our farm, and this is what they want to do. This gives me great hope. These are college-educated 20-somethings who realize that food is the basis of our culture and life. And they don't look at it as, as work anymore. That's a wonderful thing to see.
Awesome. Very helpful.
For me, I think the major paradigm shift that's happened since I worked as a 17-year-old at the headquarters for the First Earth Day in 1970, sleeping on mailbags in Washington, D.C., and working for Dennis Hayes and Gaylord Nelson, is that I think we're moving towards collaborative conservation, restoration, and economies, and away from confrontational environmental politics. And there is a necessary place for that kind of confrontational environmental politics, and we have some of the best people in the country that have wandered through these conferences. But I keep on thinking of Einstein's insanities doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. And so as an ecumenical Franciscan, that I see my vocation as religio, reconnecting people that thought they were adversaries, to get people on board with what all of you are doing, who think that you might be their adversaries, and who, some of you may think that people not in this room are their adversaries. And the collaborative conservation could get us further at this point in time than the confrontation. I'm going to give you just a two-minute parable on why I think there's good historic evidence that it's going to make more difference in confrontational politics. And that's what began to happen with Aldo Leopold and Hugh Bennett, a place called Coon Valley in the Driftless area of Wisconsin in the 1930s. A ravaged watershed, wildlife left the area, poor farming practices of new immigrants to Wisconsin. And Hugh Bennett, the first director of the Soil Erosion Service, now the Natural Resource Conservation Service, and Aldo Leopold sat down with 400 farmers in that community, week after week, went to the same coffee shop and listened to them, and began to build a plan for restoring that agricultural landscape. And it took 400 farmers on 40,000 acres and 200 civilian conservation corps workers to restore it, but 40 years later, that became the hub, because it was already where people understood collectives and collaborative action of what is now Crop and Organic Valley, which some of you know is grossing or returning to its stakeholders and farmers about $940 million a year in benefits. And I, last year with Kurt Meine, he and I told the story of Coon Valley, that restoration does lead to restored economies. That's the whole point of this story, that if we restore the land, there's a possibility for economic well-being in our communities. We, we saw a sign as we were driving through the Driftless area of a guy that said, "Proud founder of Crop and Organic Valley in this front yard." So we went and knocked on the door, and we said, "What did that feel like to be part of this thing that Aldo Leopold called cooperative conservation in 1935?" And he said, "Oh, you mean helping as one of the founding farmers of Crop, as a dairy farmer?" And I said, "Yeah." And he said, "Well, at first, all my neighbors warned me that I was becoming a communist, and after the first million dollars of revenues came back to my family, they all wanted to be communists too." And so I think this is a really good story, not of a guy working out of wealth or greed, but working out of a sense that whatever he was involved in should help his whole community, not just his family, that we need to hear and we need to spread those kind of stories wherever we travel, because this country is divided so deeply that if we don't heal that wounds, we'll have the kind of revolution that started this last week in Mexico going on here in our midst.
Thank you. Elizabeth, what's bringing you hope?
I actually just would like to echo the young people. I mean, anytime I start getting discouraged, we get so many calls at Demeter from young people, and not just young people that are interested in being farmers, but young people who are very entrepreneurial, that want to get involved somehow, might not be as a farmer. And I think that that kind of energy and youthful optimism and perspective will help us create more creative solutions for the problems that agriculture face. The other thing I just wanted to say is, you know, there are companies out there that really care about the environment, that are really committed to social and ethical ideals, and are supremely focused on product quality. And by product quality, I mean food that is good for you. And I think that is also a really positive sign.
Fantastic.
What gives me hope, in addition to what others have said really, is all the stories that everyone here is participating in and creating together. So I'm sure that if we, we all spoke to each other, or you just spoke to your neighbor who maybe you haven't met before, you're going to hear something inspiring. And that's what gives me a lot of hope.
Here, here. Well, we're going to start with questions, and I'll maybe answer the last question while we're having folks assemble at the microphones here. What's given me hope the last few years is two things. One is, every time I've dug down and researched the dysfunction in our current financial system, I can't, and the story, I can't close that loop without seeing all of the sprouts that are coming up around it, all of the new endeavors, some within the old system, but most outside of it, that are starting from a completely different starting point and providing the function that has become missing in some of our current systems. And then I'd couple that with the human side. When I left Wall Street, most of my friends said, "Hey, good luck." In exactly that tone, that means like, "I wish you well, but goodbye. Like, I know I will never see you again." And the number of people who have circled back to me on a personal level and also on a professional level in recent years, saying, "Hey, that stuff you were talking about, could we talk some more?" I mean, they've seen the pig, essentially, right? Like, they, they understand, like, there's, there's something here that all of us are in one way or another participating in, and one way or another need to understand more deeply. So I think we're living in a hopeful time. Do we have questions from the audience? First one. And, and I would urge us, we're trying to get as many voices heard as possible, so if we can keep that in mind, that'd be great. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kristi. I'm from Ontario in Canada, and I, I wanted to talk about pigness and humanness, and what your thoughts were on what is ultimately humanness. Like, we can talk, like Woody says, with the left side of our brain about all these beautiful ideas of how things work in systems, and then there's the right side of our brain that makes us do things in the immediate interactions. And we just went through Halloween. I have two kids, two boys, who, five and eight. The older one is innately generous and very aware of the world, and the five-year-old is incredibly self-centered and charming, but, you know, he's got his ideas, and they all have to do with him. And maybe he'll outgrow that, maybe that's a five-year-old thing. But during Halloween, we had this crazy interaction where we were learning how to trade, and candy means more to kids than money, because money doesn't mean anything. Candy is very real, and so we were learning how to trade with mutual benefit. If you're going to trade that, then they need to want the other thing. You can't coerce them into trading with you, or eventually, then it ended up that we were stealing. It was all about Kit Kats for us, that we, you know, they all had seven, and then the five-year-old ate three of his Kit Kats, and then took some of the Kit Kats from this eight-year-old, because he now had more, but he had already eaten the ones, so--
Five-year-old, yeah.
And it's, and that, and so I was looking at that, thinking, what is this humanness that will drive us? It's my job as a mother to teach my five-year-old that he cannot take my eight-year-old's Kit Kats once he's eaten all of his own. But that is kind of the history of our food system, and we are in a country, Canada and the United States, where we took land and resources from people who were using them, and we have used them for our benefit, and we continue to do that. And I run businesses, and I, every day, you make complicated decisions about value and what you can do as a businessperson, and what is that mutual benefit? And how do you negotiate that? And then it gets even more complicated when we bring money in, which really doesn't mean anything.
I think we got, yeah, that's--
So please, let me explain this. How do we deal with this?
All right. So, so this is a great question, and I know a lot of us have worked for a long time in natural systems, and there is this, this sort of paradox, you know, humans are a part of nature and also seemingly unique within it in some ways. So who would, who would like to tackle the humanness versus the pigness?
Well, a couple of days ago, I had a visit from an old friend named Henning Semsdorf, who's a old German biodynamic farmer on Lopez Island. And he proceeded to sort of show me this image, this beautiful image, listing the four essential elements, you know, earth, fire, water, and air. And then he, he also showed this human being as a part of this image as the quintae essentia, or the fifth element. And I took exception to this, and I said, you know, "How can you say that we're different or separate, and that maybe this is sort of at the core of our problems?" And we had this lovely conversation where he sort of convinced me, mostly because he's got gray hair and is significantly wiser than I am, that really, that at some level, we human beings are separate from nature because of our consciousness, but it is only partial knowledge that makes us think that we are separate. And our life quest, really, is to complete that loop of knowledge, and when we do, we realize that we are an essential part of the natural system, but we are, and that we close that loop, and that we're not separate. So I found that very telling.
Very helpful. All right. I'm not, I'm not sure how to translate that to Kit Kats and five-year-olds, but that, that sense of connection eventually, one way or the other, I think we've all seen in life. Thank you.
The Kit Kat theory of colonization. I love it.
Next question.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Shay Rose. I'm originally from Nassau, Bahamas, and I moved to South Florida. I'm out here with the Wendell Berry program at St. Catherine College with a few of my colleagues in the back. My major, and a little more in-depth, would be sustainability and ecology with agrarianism. One of the things that I found interesting-- One of the things that I found interesting, beyond everything that was said, was, you know, you talk about the politics, the guidelines, regulations, the rules that it takes to even start something at a local, smaller level. So how important, you know, I listen to Wendell Berry, and it starts on, you know, fighting global economy with the local economy. You know, how important do you think it is that we have people that are, you know, very passionate, that work vigorously, you know, at a political level, as just as a farmer's do on a local level, and making sure that we reach some type of, you know, economic growth or sustainable environment for our future? Some things are appalling to me, such as the amount of emissions that are leaking to the atmosphere. I think, yes, we're here for food, we're here for slow money, what's healthy, what's not, but we're also ultimately here for the survival of human race. So how do we attack this? Do we fight it with letters? Do we fight it with phone calls? Do we fight it with peaceful protest? And, you know, I was talking with a few of the people in the audience, I don't think this is something that's to be done next week, next month. This is something that should be done today. So, yeah.
Thank you. Awesome. So I think this is touching on some ongoing themes in the conference so far. Who would like to comment? Elliot?
Yeah, since I've decided to represent the 60s today. There was a wonderful saying back then, what if they threw a war and no one came? And I've always thought that the best way is to operate like an earthworm from the bottom. If we get people thinking in a certain way, we don't have to worry about convincing the people at the top. They've been sidestepped.
Yeah, the, you know, I think there's different metabolisms in this room that are almost inherently attracted at certain points in their lives to the policy and the politics work, and some will always stay in the practical realm. And I've gone up and down over the years in, between those two poles. And I think different people need to participate in change in different ways, at different points in their lives, that it's silly to think that we're all going to be great political activists or great farmers. We need everyone in the food chain to play a niche there.
All of the above, yeah.
I was asking because I'm very interested in the political side of things. I plan to go into environmental law. And, you know, it's shocking, because I, you know, I saw the congresswoman here, and she spoke a little bit about her colleagues back in DC, and said that, you know, it's a stone wall, it's hard to break down. Now, if there was a, you know, I'm not saying that if we had six congresswomen and six congressmen here, that would mean that much more of an impact, but I feel that on some level, you know, you need to have people in health care that can educate the young youth on the nutritional value behind, you know, good food and how it's made. And then you also have to have people that are here locally, here as a congregation, that are on the small levels, and then obviously, it's a political level. And I think that there needs to be some type of equilibrium met between all three categories, almost like--
I think what you're hearing here is all of the above, a big, huge vote unanimous for all of the above, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We have time for two more questions, maybe three, if they're, you know, super quick. And I'm conscious of taking the most important issues of our time and condensing them into less than an hour, so our policies, and I think this is maybe in relation to the last question, this is all part of a big, multi-layered, ongoing conversation, so it will be good for us to carry this forward. Yes?
I'm Allison Henderson from Logan's Court, Indiana. The son of a dairy farmer, who was the son of a dairy farmer, who was the son of a dairy farmer, son of a farmer, son of a farmer.
Wow.
The last thing--
That's a lot of sons.
I witnessed my father lose his farm, a family farm, when I was 11. Then moved to, owned to the Biltmore State in Nashville, North Carolina, where my dad was in charge of the dairy. And so him losing the farm, we were broke, and so it was understood, and I was going to go to college, that if I was going to college, I'd have to pay half my way. So I started milking cows when I was 14. And the last thing I wanted to do when I went off to college was to milk cows. So I didn't major in dairy science. Changed my major from accounting to dairy science halfway through.
Cows are calling.
Exactly. And then later on, I would go into, decide to go and get my Master of Divinity and go into the ministry. Now, God wanted me to be a dairy farmer in preparation for the ministry. You don't call 24/7, and you walk in the same stuff every day. The big difference is, in dairy farming, you know you're stepping in it, and it's an asset. And the other, you don't know you're in it till this deep, and it's not an asset. I had this tension between spirituality and farming, and I found farming a lot more spiritual. And so I had this nightmare going on inside of me, and then the Methodist Church called me up and said, will you become the Sustainable in Urban Agriculture Consultant to the General Board of Global Ministries of Methodist Church?
All right.
And there, I saw best practices all over the country, and had gotten involved and found my true calling. And moved to Nashville, Tennessee. Where are you, Scott Wise? And there, the head of the Divinity School, I told him what I'd do, put together the ACTS project, ACTS, which stands for American Communities Transitioning to Sustainability. And I laid it out in front of him. He says, if you pull this off, you'll have a model of what I've been teaching for 20 years. And he asked me to be a part of a think tank between the Divinity School, the Law School, the Business School, and the Med School at Vanderbilt University. Most innovative thing I'd ever been a part of. Well, I'd just gotten through lecturing a consortium of the faculty and the students at Vanderbilt. Scott, if I tear up, you know why. Left Vanderbilt, crossed over to West End, United Methodist Church. Fired up. Crosswalk said, walk. I did. Never trust a crosswalk that says walk. The microsecond, the split microsecond, I saw the car that had just ran a red light. And I remember taking my computer and screaming, God, I ain't through yet. Left shoulder broke a windshield. That would be the last thing I'd remember for two weeks. Five minutes from one of the top five traumatic brain injury hospitals in the country. Four times that first week, I called in family and friends and said, I would not live, and if I did, I'd probably never walk again. I didn't walk for six months. But thanks to Scott Wise and so many other friends in Nashville who encouraged me and visited me, I finally got mad as hell to get up and finally get, take that first step after six months.
All right.
And, but I'd been on the board of directors of the American Community Guarding Association, and one of my therapists in the best hospital, there were five hospitals I was in, said, will you work with the other TBI patients? And my healing is directly proportional, as well as my spiritual health, with how much dirt I've got underneath my fingernails. I have a banquet table theology. There's nothing more cultural than food and music. When we sit down at the table with other cultures, we find out we don't have that much that separates us. Now, I wanted to say this too, is that the number one returning injuries of our vets is traumatic brain injuries. The soil doesn't lick over your shoulder and expect you to perform at the level you once did. If you've got land to open up, think about wounded warrior and putting jobs back to our vets. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to end our discussion on that note, and I'm going to give our panelists a chance just to give you one shout-out phrase to take with you as we circle out to lunch.
Can we hear the little guy here?
Oh, I didn't even see. One more question. Thank you.
My question is, how can you help? Oh, I'm Jack Burns from Alfred Station, New York. And my question is, how can you help a farmer get, like, support a farmer? Like, how can you help support a farmer, like, by maybe buying, like, could you, like, what would you suggest?
Great, thank you, thank you. Awesome question. Actually, you know what? Let's make this our takeaway question. Each one of you, if you can give us a, what's your number one way to support a farmer?
I saw a bumper sticker in England, and it said, eat your view. And if you wanted to see beautiful farms around you, you had to be buying from the local farmers.
Nice.
I think the way is establishing the relationships like you just did with us, that you get into a personal thing where we're asking things of each other, and looking someone straight in the eye, and getting to know them as another creature on this planet. So thank you for your bravery in getting up here.
Awesome.
I know Jack is a farmer himself. You know, Jack, one of the things I notice is how great farmers are helping other farmers. So one of the things we really focus on is trying to create environments where farmers can actually get together and talk to each other, because they're the biggest problem solvers of all.
All right.
I guess I would end with love, I think in all of its embodiments, certainly in terms of relationships and buying food, but deeper than that, making those connections, I think, is the key.
All right. Well, that is a lovely note to close our panel on. Please join me in thanking our panelists. All right.
Thank you for saying that.
Thank you so much.